Okay, I get six o'clock and I call this meeting to order first order of business is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and just.
Okay, um, that several minutes to approve. I'm looking to approve the regular session or a motion to approve the regular session minutes for September fifteenth.
I make your motion.
Uh, second vote, yes, uh, motion to approve special session minutes for September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, that was the Brookside.
I'll wait till a few seconds.
Uh, vote, yes. And then, uh, the special session minutes of September twenty-sixth, that was Brookside Country Club.
I'll wait till our motion, second.
Vote, yes, uh, public comment period, Frank County is not here, Brookside.
The fall block party is next weekend and at the school.
Good action, um, let it go down to F. Connor Revell next.
I don't have anything. Uh, I know we're still waiting on the street light for Revell. And we got a follow-up on that, supposed to like.
Uh, Worthington Hills and Mr. Steele, I assume you're here to talk.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Go ahead, floor is yours.
Uh, Brian Steele, fifteen seventy, Oakview Drive, I'm here in support of, uh, our elected officials and our police. Who is the resident expert on law enforcement, especially flock cameras. Flock cameras are proven to be efficient, they do cost some money. I understand as stewards of the town funds, you have to look at how much they cost. You almost have to look at how much it costs for man hours, investigative hours, patrol hours. These are force multipliers. For these flock cameras to work, they have to be on key areas. And I will use an example, entry and exit points are your best. There is no big brother, there's no facial recognition, they are taking data from vehicles. Um, any law enforcement officer that wishes to look into that data, just like Leeds, it's locked, there's audits. So there's really nowhere for the government to overstep. As a resident in this town, it's not just obviously I'm personally affected, a vehicle stolen, it's not just vehicle stolen. It's missing kids in vehicles, um, kidnappings, catalytic converter steps, checking doorknobs, these are all things that can be prevented. I speak with my neighbors, we have no issue paying the high taxes we pay. If we're getting something in return, which the number one thing government is here for is public safety. And we need to continue to invest in those public safety. If you look at neighborhoods, Columbus, uh, Upper Arlington, I believe Dublin's going to them, everybody else is going to them. And you could integrate that system, so we're either gonna be left behind or we're gonna move forward and join this technology. And I'll stand for any questions, I don't work for flock, by the way.
Yeah, well, so, um, Brian, we've talked, we have. Very well aware of block and what they do and the benefits and, and everything like that. Um, in fact, um, I think what we had talked about one time was just having access. Our detectives to have access to the system. And we have had access, see, how long have we had access to the, you know, just in there gonna kind of.
Uh, probably the last four years.
Right, um, so we've been, we've had access, there's a couple of things that, um. You know, just from my perspective on the thing, so what are they now, like three thousand dollars a camera?
Three thousand camera, the more you buy, the price goes down, roughly three thousand a camera.
Right, so, so the issue that we deal with with township is. In, in Worthington Hills, you're gonna need minimum three. Brookside, you're gonna need a minimum of two, if, if we're just doing the entrances. Uh, now, that doesn't, you know, that doesn't, oh, no, I'm sorry, we need three. Because you got the three separate entrances.
And then Brookside West.
Right, and then we have Brookside West, which is two. And then Larkstone, Henderson Heights, and so, so the issue that we have with, with the flock is. You can't elevate one community, you gotta provide that for, for everything. So where I'm at, and I kept asking the question, is, is there a partnership? Cause at the end of the day, I agree, having the access to that information is, you know, critical. I mean, we've used it and, and, and multiple times.
Yeah.
My question is, is there the ability to work with civic association? Where it doesn't put the pressure on how, like, we still get the ability to use it, but the civic associations can. You know, because again, they're, they're, um, you know, it's like partnership.
Sure.
And we've been asked, like, well, what if we bought a camera, what if we, you know, what if we did that? And I, I think, you know, that'd be, but the problem with, is the way I understand it is, if you have the public, if somebody from buys it. We don't have access to that, we don't have access to the network. And I think ultimately, that's what we're trying to figure out, how to get access to the network. But it's not just, hey, Worthington Hills, we're gonna buy three and the rest of township, we kind, we look at that times. Whatever, and it really becomes financially problematic to do that. Now, I don't know if there's grants out there, I don't know if there's things like that, or a small township that we can leverage, I don't know.
Just to hit on that, I would say equity and equality in policing is a false god, there's no such thing. So what you do is you look to not everybody being the same, where is crime driven? If crime is driven on this certain area of Perry Talon, oh, make easy for you, that's where your resources go. Not exactly over here where there's nothing, so I don't know how the Perry Township crimes going. I just know my own neighborhood in the last month, three stolen cars, at least one car theft a year ago, a, a drive-by shooting discharge. If that is happening on the Brookside, then I would say, yeah, look there too. If Brookside is showing higher crime than Worthington Hills, as a taxpayer of Perry, I would say, yeah, put the cameras there first. So your answer is, don't go equally across the town, go where crime is going, where the hotspots are. And that's where I would personally start if I was in the large, of course, I'm not. Again, financial, you're correct, it should be a partnership. I spoke to a trustee overly who had said he was interested and hopefully, if he didn't reach out to one of you yet, he will. He had said they're interested at least starting on the Sharon side, that might, uh, take one entrance off, and that might be two. Um, neighbors and I talked about, uh, funding, neighborhood funding, we could do a bake sale, whatever you guys do, we could work together to try to make this happen. I just, I'm a believer of focusing on solutions, not the problems, let's find a solution to this. And if it's financial, we could do that, sir, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, so let me, let me ask a couple of questions, because access is, is the key. That's, we're losing access when?
I believe, uh, November first.
November first. And to me, it's not, and I worked on this, so I'm kinda on the side of. Get the technology, use a tool, put those in your toolbox, so that you can have that available to you, so you can fight the crime when, when it occurs, so. Um, but I think there's discussion centered around having a camera at each of our elementary schools as a starting.
Be a great start.
And so, because they are on, those schools are on main roadways. Uh, in both areas of Brookside and Worthington Hills. And so, getting access is the key, anyways, and so. I think it's, it can be within the chief's budget, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, be in the chief's budget. For the beginning of twenty twenty-six. Um, and, I mean, I'm not sure where the entire board is. I'd be happy to make a motion that January one, twenty twenty-six, that we purchase two cameras. Want to be stationed at elementary schools, Brookside, Inmoreton Hills, as a starting point with flock cameras. I'm biased, I mean, I've seen this before, I've talked to other township trustees throughout the county that have these. And I know they will never go back to what they, what they had, which was virtually just a person trying to solve a crime. They knew the technology was gonna work for them, it has worked for them, it's proven itself over and over again, so. I think the investment is a wise one, but I need to make sure that the board is okay. We're looking at two cameras, one in Brookside, one in Worthington Hills at the school area, starting January one, twenty-six. Does the school have any cameras at all? The school has been, we have communicated with the school, they both have indicated, uh, both the principals as well as the school district. Uh, have indicated their support for that.
They have cameras.
They have cameras already. Correct, for their, for their property.
Their own security.
Here's what my thought is, maybe I'd be interested in hearing your police perspective on this. There's no way any community has a flock camera on every single road in their community, you just could never do that, right?
With the exception, maybe of Ohio State, but let's be honest, Ohio State has so much money that almost every block off campus probably does. They have a lot more money, we're lucky in the hills through three hundred.
But I'm, yeah, but I'm talking municipalities and townships, there's like Upper Arlington.
Right, there's probably Upper Arlington has a flock camera.
Because of their size and all the entry and exits.
And we're a little bit that same way, cause we're some fragmented of all that. My thought is, um, you basically have three ways to get in and out of Worthington Hills. And three ways to get in and out of Brookside, and that covers about ninety percent of Perry Township's population. Two of the entrances to Worthington Hills are actually in Sharon Township, Highview and in the main club view, if you could get into some kind of cost sharing with. Splitting that with Sharon Township.
I can answer, they, they're, they won't let two agencies go together on one contract. It's the same price, even if we bought four, if we went together and said we're gonna do four cameras as a whole, it's still gonna be three thousand.
But the entrance that we're gonna also wanna do out of our third entrance is Columbus.
Well, that's what I said, there's four, you need four Worthington Hills. You need Clubview and Highview, Clubview and three fif, I'm sorry, three fifteen and Highview, three fifteen and Clubview. You need one at Southview, you need one on Beach Lake. Do you have four, you four, you have four entry exit points in Worthington?
Where's city of Columbus, do they, do they use flock?
There, there, there are more and more, the answer is yes, it started on campus, they're seeing a success.
But why don't we, you know, can you propose something like this, if there's four entrances to Worthington Hills. Sharon Township, why don't you buy two and we'll buy two, that way you can both share the data, and then there is share access to it. Though Hills is completely covered and we're only paying for two cameras, they're paying for two, there's three for Brookside, that's all on us, obviously. I don't think five flock cameras breaks us, and, and it covers more of our township than I guarantee any other township with those five cameras.
But if I'm, if I'm looking at, say that goes, so immediately we're, we're adding fifteen thousand dollars to our budget, okay? Our police, our.
At, at today's rate, depending on where they go with it.
So my question is, is at what point do we get the discount? How many, how many cameras do you gotta buy to get?
I would have to ask, because I don't know, do you know how many cameras it is?
I don't know.
I, we only talked about.
Yeah, I know the ones on campus, they got them down, I think, you know, between two thousand and twenty-five hundred, but remember Ohio State's probably buying twenty cameras.
Yeah, and I can have that conversation with the flock rep and to find out where that break comes from.
Oh, I don't know of any other jurisdiction, any other, other Ohio State that's convinced, obviously, you know, it, it's a different animal.
Nobody does every street, so.
I think anybody's saying that every street should do that.
You don't need to like, what, you know, what about people at Larkstone, they need one, what about people at Henderson Heights, they need one, what about, you know, it's just on and on and on. You can't have every single person covered, but I don't know of too many places where you could, where one entity could buy potentially five flock cameras. And literally cover ninety percent of the, of the township. Right?
I would say, yes, we're going to that. Five, ten, fifteen years, there'll be a camera on every one of your shoulders, that's just where we're going, the technology.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I'm talking about today's technology.
Again, I don't know if we can compare apples to apples, though, we, we are lucky in our town that there is so, only so many entrances to neighborhoods. And I think, I think these towns would do it if they could, my, my ignorance, what is your budget? If we're talking fifteen thousand a year, out of how much a year?
I don't, I would just draft top of my head.
The police budget?
Yeah.
We had all those sheets here.
I was gonna say, we just had it right in front of us, and I don't remember.
So, so here's the thing, I mean, fifteen thousand theoretically doesn't make or break us, or. Twenty-five thousand doesn't make or break us today, in today's world with today's other expenses. Now, as everything else starts to increase, and those costs increase, if residents are pushing back, because, hey, what do you mean? We just had something happen in my area, in certain area here, and you're not giving us the same level of service. I mean, we do have to factor all of that in, so I, I don't think it's about the twenty-five thousand dollars out the door, I think it's about what it becomes.
Well, to your original point, what's the crime data right now? Yeah, we had, we had, you know, okay, recently, but it's like if we look over the past.
Twelve months.
Twelve months and say, okay, where, let's look at the crime, and, and I would say it's across the board. And I would even include Collins, like, I remember I chatted you about the creepy.
Yeah.
Band that was kinda cruising through Worthington Hills, I would say that, you know, that type of stuff, suspicious activity. But the, the, the schools, I don't know if it gets anything, cause you, you put a camera by school, well, if I steal a vehicle. Uh, it's never gonna pick me up, cause I'm, I'm, I, if I go Clubview North and go out.
Yeah.
Well, the idea is what you're talking about, if we can cover Worthington Hills and Brookside, because the issues that we have. There are no cameras close to either neighborhood for us. Riverside Drive, we have Arlington, Arlington Point has their own cameras, so that is ideal, because the schools was a starting point. If we can cover a full neighborhood, that's the idea, that's what, that's what a city like Arlington does.
Let me, let me, let me just probably, I really struggle with this, because talking about access, not talking about. Listen, this is a, a nationwide network, okay? So, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to afford all these cameras, okay? But if we're part of the group, okay? That gives us access to all those cameras that exist out there, and all those cameras that will exist out there. That's the whole point, that's the starting point.
Right.
If we wanna argue about, oh, Worthington Hills needs five, and Brookside needs seven, and blah blah, and then we need to, we can argue that later on down the road. All I'm saying is that we need to get this started, well, because we're losing access, okay? And Charlie, the folks will not have the ability to go into a system and say, after November first. Or be able to utilize that technology to say, hey, we had a car, it was stolen, broken into, whatever was, there's suspicious vehicle. Let's try to track where that went. That's all I'm asking, is, is a starting point. And if we wanna put it on Clubview South, near the school, and we wanna put it on McVay, near the school. What is the harm in that?
I, I would say you put it, if you're gonna do one, I would do it at Clubview. The main entrance to Clubview, because if somebody comes down Highview and goes south, you're gonna catch them, you're gonna, you're gonna pick them up.
I would rather work.
So you just cut to.
If they're going to do two, we could do the other two entrances, so that covers every entrance.
Well, why don't we do this, and, and to Michelle's point, you need a bigger, like, what's the plan, what's the bigger plan? Cause a lot of times we, like, it's, okay, let's do it, and then we don't, we, we don't have a five-year plan, a three-year, a five-year plan. I think we all recognize that technology is good, that, the question is, how do we balance it with, you know, our. You know, the, because again, it would kill, I mean, I personally, fifteen grand every year. This money's gotta free up some other place.
Right.
So, I mean, I guess, Brian, if, if we, um, decided to, I, you know, I think we gotta look at the statistics. Over the past year, where, where did that happen? Then look at where, what's makes sense, if we just did, you know, talk to Sharon. And then, um, do a, like, kind of like, where does it make sense from there, based on the, based on the data? And then, let's get back together, I mean, and we could probably do that by the next meeting, don't you think?
Yeah, absolutely.
So why don't we just get back to the next meeting? Look at the.
Are you available?
I, I'm not sure, but the questions you're asking, I would just, that's what you gotta police chief, like, yeah, I look forward to hearing what the chief comes up with and what the plan is.
Absolutely, we, I can put all of them together and, uh, send it to the forward.
And I'm here to advocate for you.
For the next.
By the way, I'm not here.
Well, and my other question is, you know, are there any grant opportunities?
Their time is running out.
Oh, absolutely.
The next meeting is the, the last meeting.
Right, before they get access, yeah.
But, but Chad, it's like, if, okay, if we lose access for a month, it's not, like, I.
No, but here, and here's where my frustration comes from, we've talked about this for, I don't know.
We didn't know we were losing access to the last meeting.
Yeah.
See, well, that's the breaking point, I mean.
Do your officers have access, or just your detectives?
Uh, officers too, okay, yeah, everybody has access to them, yeah.
But if we came, if, if we talk to Sharon between now and next meeting, somehow we can come to an agreement to just pick it out of the. We do four, they do two, something like that. And if you called up, uh, a flock after that meeting and said we're gonna order these, you will get access starting November.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So I'm not nervous about that.
Yeah.
I, I, you wanna get them for the best bang for your buck, but I don't know too many areas, like Worthington Hills. That big, that many homes, it only has four possible ways to get in and out. When you think of most streets and neighborhoods, we look at like downtown Worthington, there's tons of ways to get all over the place. But, but, and even Brookside, it's pretty locked down in terms of how you get in and out of that place.
But you may find that per density, Brookside may be the one that, like, you know.
Yeah, it's a full set of numbers.
And again, we don't have to wait to the next meeting to be educated on what we found over the last two weeks, so it's like, soon as you get it. Like, again, do we have a partner in Sharon or not, are they interested, they're not.
I should be, I did use statistics.
Yep.
And talk to Sharon.
Yeah, just send it out, we can all think, we can ask you questions, you know, get a thing, so if we come back to the next meeting, we're.
You'll know for the next meeting.
Yeah, we're not asking questions, like, we're already up to date, and it'll kind of streamline the process.
That's easy.
Okay.
Well, I just wanna close with this, though, as, as elected officials, your job is Perry. As a resident, I don't care about Columbus or, or Worthington, of course I care, I'm not advocating for that. Perry, we have an opportunity to provide enhanced public safety to our township that we work for and live in. And that's my main focus, and that's all my focuses, like I said, not a flock spokesman, if there was different technology, I would get it. I just know as a resident expert in policing, these things are the way to go.
Okay.
I appreciate you, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, all right.
Um, zoning, um, we just have, uh. We have a meeting on Thursday for water property on West Case, but that's, um, only thing that we have, uh, road department.
Uh, on the project updates, uh, Decker all started back up on the curbs. This, uh, this weekend on the other side of Candlewood, they plan on having, uh, the new curb on that side for by the end of the week. Uh, Friday, Saturday, uh, you started on Beach Lake and Candlewood Lane after that. Um, the schedule was updated on the website for the resurfacing, uh, that is all dependent on Decker getting. The, uh, the coverage replaced, they're trying to get everything in, so they can get the fiber map down before temperatures get too cold. Well, that's all I have for the updates.
Real quick, where are we with Brookside doing a walk-through?
Uh, the, uh, so working on scheduling that, I spoke with, uh, AJ, he's overseeing the projects for the county. They are gonna use flaggers down there, uh, they don't plan on being in Brookside until the twentieth. Or after of October, the sidewalk down there. There are Briggs, it's Briggs Elementary right now doing the sidewalks on that.
Are they gonna stay there, because it's late in the, the season?
That, that's the way they're working it all, they're just completing each sidewalk.
As they go.
Each project as they go, yeah.
So I am, one of the things that, um, was brought up to me by a resident. Whose kids are at Brookside, and I touched on this in the last meeting, is that apparently, based on whatever the schedule is this year with the school. The buses are stacking up on McVay, um, to the south of the school. Just generally, every day, and they sent a picture to me. So, because the buses want to come into the school in order, right, so, you know. So they're just waiting, and they're blocking essentially, and I don't know if you guys have reported this or not, they're blocking the, that lane. And, and parking in front of the home that is next to the school, you know, to the right. So they do that, I guess, every afternoon, I'm not certain about morning, to be honest, um, I know that I've seen that in the morning.
I just haven't heard.
But I'm concerned, and it's, it's a conversation we're gonna have to have with the school. I mean, first of all, not really a fan of that approach to begin with.
Your way, go ahead.
Well, but second, that's where the work area is. So, if they're going to be building the sidewalk, and we're going to have that going on, and then where are the buses going to go?
I can call the bus garage.
Okay.
Work out something with them.
And I'll send the picture, just so you have a frame of reference for it, uh, because it was a surprise to me, I, I, something has changed with the way they're using notices and.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen buses out on McVay, I'm not sure if it's morning, afternoon times. But I've seen them sitting out there, waiting, and I thought it was a little funny.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm just, and I'm concerned, like I said, I'm concerned about what that does to, um, during that project. I mean, and not to mention, it's just frankly an issue anyway, because then you've got cars cutting around the buses, and you could potentially have kids. Coming out across the street at the same time, so.
I will work that out with the bus.
Thank you.
I'd say, I talked to her over there, just before the, uh, Worthington Hills. Sidewalk project, kind of let her know that, that was going on up there, and I'll do the same thing.
Thank you.
Well, we have to stage the buses back further.
Yeah.
Possibly on one of the courts there.
And then she went, they go down to like May Court.
That's what I'm thinking, then they go to the court, I just sent you a picture.
Oh, you sent the picture before?
She sent to me, I turned to you.
You sent it to both of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But, I mean, just so you get an idea, looking at it, this is where they stack up, so they go that one pass.
But if they went, if they set up or scheduled themselves in a way that they wanna be lined up on a court. Then I think they would be at least out of the way in the work area. But it's something we need to talk to the school district about, I mean, so that they're prepared for that.
Well, and in truth, it probably is something, again, even just generally, there's gotta be a better way, you know, outside of the project.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
Uh, anything else?
Yeah, then under new business, uh, there's estimates, quotes for gutter replacements on building one and two. Uh. With the option of leaf guard, uh. For the entirety of building one, uh, and then the back half of the offices on building two. I don't think we need leaf guard on the garage part, uh, or the front part of building two, there's just the one tree out here. We have, uh, a couple oaks along the back of buildings, uh, this building, I don't know if it's as important on the front. But the option is there to, to have it on both sides. Uh, the garage part of building two, uh, both sides, the gutters are damaged and do need replaced. Uh, they're not working properly, and these, these estimates are to replace them with, uh, six inch. And get rid of them, the ones we have on here are undersized, and the leaf guard that they used. On these, when they were put in, uh, they've stopped doing the style because of the icicles that form on that style. And we've had issues with icicles on this building, well, all of our buildings.
Who's your, uh, who's preference side?
Uh, professional gutters and drains, uh, all the estimates are apples to apples, uh, I did not update the. Spreadsheet in your, your folder, the estimate that I provided, the thousand ten for gutters here. Was just for the back, it would be double that for building one, two thousand twenty, uh, if we went with leaf guard on both sides. And then, building two, they quoted the entirety, that's what the twenty-nine twenty is, for the rear, only at seven hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, for building one, with leaf guard would be five thousand three hundred and eighty, uh. That's gutters and the leaf guard with, for building two, gutters, and then just leaf guard on the rear of the office area would be five thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars.
So what, um, what line of this is coming, is this part out of police, part out of, out of building two road?
Things that we would be looking to allocate based off of the, you know, footage, breakdown, for each building. I will say, I mean, to your point about professional gutter, their, their warranty, including labor, is five years, whereas the other one is two years.
You missed chairman, I've moved to authorize the expenditure of eleven thousand, no more than eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Before installation of six inch stainless gutters, and the appropriate leaf guard option. Section, vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's eleven thousand, yeah, three fifty thousand. Uh, and then, uh, there was an estimate for garage heaters, uh. Uh, and then, uh, there was an estimate for garage heaters, uh. I would like to order four garage heaters and filters for the radiant tubes in our garage, uh. Getting four, that would get eight of our ten burners up and running for this winter. With the hopes that we could use parts.
Are these guys, do these guys service the current ones?
Uh, our air comb. People, those, they've serviced them before, uh, this company came out and assisted with that kind of show. So, well, there's not really any companies that are specific to the radiant tubes.
So are they gonna be the warranty now, or is, is like who?
The parts would be warranted through them. We're gonna do, I would, the road department would do the installation. This is swapping one motor out for the other, but enough to gas and power.
I.
This is like a sole source provider.
Yeah. They were out the last winter trying to help me get a couple of them.
And that's.
Still running.
That's road department budget.
All road department.
All road, okay.
And this was worked into the budget into the repairs earlier this year.
Uh, this chair moved to authorize the expenditure, I can see forty-seven hundred dollars for the personal installation of burners. And six back filters for the road department building two.
Second. Both?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, the last thing on my agenda is of the board to. Approve a resolution recognizing still moderate awareness.
So move.
Second vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's it.
Uh, fire any mess?
Uh, I have a report from Worthington for the month of September, there were fourteen calls for service. Uh, I have not received anything from Upper Arlington Yard.
Uh, police?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Um, paint shader administrator.
Um, under whole business, the amended employment understandings for Chief Cicero, Lieutenant Ponkle. Um, John sent these to you prior to the meeting. Please.
All right, good.
Yeah.
You want me to make a motion that we, uh. I guess adopt the employment understandings for, I'll give you several one, first for Chief Cicero.
Uh, second. Vote.
Yes.
Yes.
I also make a motion that we, uh, uh, adopt the employment understanding for Lieutenant Ponkle.
Uh, second vote.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. The cybersecurity policy and resolution. The state of Ohio has implemented the R C section nine point six four enacted by House Bill ninety-six. Requiring all the governments and jurisdictions to establish a cybersecurity policy. It was supposed to be done by September thirtieth, but there's a couple entities that have been a little late. Um, their goal with this is to strengthen protection of public data, information systems and technology resources from cybersecurity threats and risks.
Is there anything that we're gonna have to add to our current situation to?
Let's think of that just. Second budget.
No. No.
Well, I intended, I intended the auditor of state's training on this.
Yeah.
And the training was boiled down to, you all already do this, you just need a policy.
Right.
And that policy, one that we have.
That was written.
Right.
Right. I move to adopt the cybersecurity policy for Perry Township.
Okay.
Vote.
Yes.
All right. And then I have Mike Crawford here from the Go and Brothel vendor to expand on what I'm asking for. Um, so I'm asking if you can approve combining the H R A accounts for employees. There is time and local H R A accounts tied to each employee. Uh, one being the base H R A that township offers, and then whichever addition accounts the employer receives. Based on the percentage of wellness incentives that they complete. Um, this affects the Amerflex portal account side, but does not affect employees directly, they can place their card and it comes out, et cetera. Um, this is something that can be done immediately.
Do we need, do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, the formalities.
It's just a matter of taking the two accounts.
Six accounts, but yes.
Yes.
Tying the math and, there you go.
Yeah, the amounts stay the same, it doesn't change anything employee does. The only thing they would need to make sure of is that they track their expenses, which they can from the app. Just cause there's separate accounts, there won't be.
When are wellness credits added? Or when does the documentation have to be?
End of the year.
Ball thirty-one, yeah.
Okay, cause I know some years it's always been like eleven, one or eleven.
That was, uh. Pulled by previous.
Okay, all right.
Curious how you were getting some. It's like watching, just to see.
Did you see the smoke?
My point is, yeah.
No, I think this will make things smoother, easier, better for all parties involved. I mean, there won't be any.
I understood it, but.
It's just to classify medicals from vision, dental, Band-Aids, prescription, those types of things. It's just, but you're spending the money on all that stuff anyway, so lump sum it and then we won't have any issues moving forward.
How quickly can they be combined?
I can send an email tomorrow, I want it to be done in two hours.
Okay.
And I'll just let the employees know when you know it's. Thank you.
Okay.
Circle.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
It's missing.
Uh, I make a motion to combine H R A amounts into one account. No dollar amounts will change, um, I'm gonna make that motion.
Second.
Vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing my job for me.
That's right.
Fantastic, I'm gonna say it any better myself.
Let's just rest on the bottom.
Yeah, um. This officer.
Okay, um, we do not yet have final closure on the audit, um, check again tomorrow. And your SharePoint.
Goodness, we're extension to.
Very good. In your SharePoint folder, you have our monthly township summary, in addition to the bank registration and solution report for September. And then I've requested approval, a motion for approval of payroll enforcement.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Vote.
Yes.
Yes. Um, anything else with good thoughts? Very nice. I move to adjourn.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
I already think. All in favor, vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.